On the agenda here, I just have a question, Anne. The agenda, I have the, um, public meeting notice that says 3B.
Yep.
There's only 3A on the list.
All right, what's the, what's the notice for?
Um, it's for the, um, signage of 56.
Linwood or?
Fifty-six Main.
Fifty-six Main Street, yeah, that's 4B. The agenda got bungled around.
Oh, 4B, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So that's for 3A.
And then the, um, is for, do we, oh no, that's for 8H.
Yeah, you only have one tonight. You're only opening one new one tonight, so you only have that one.
For the sign. That's 3A.
3A, yeah.
Oh, that's right, you are opening a second one, yeah.
One's a public hearing, one's a public.
Meeting.
Meeting. Yeah, it's funny because hearing under the, the law is for very specifically special permits. Public meetings are specific to site plans. It's weird math law.
All right, here we go. All right, it's 6:30 PM, start the planning board meeting. Call your, first action item is the draft meeting minutes from July 28, 2025.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chairman, Kelly had sent those to me, but I never sent them to you, so they're ready. Okay? Can you hear me?
Yep.
So you'll want to table those for the next meeting.
All right. Do we need a motion for that, or just, we'll just continue until next meeting?
Nope.
All right.
Nope, no motion.
All right, next one is reorg and appoint CM RPC representatives. Do you want to do that, or?
Okay, so, um, yeah, actually CM RPC has been asking. You can, if you want to wait, you're, you obviously can. If not, um, you could reorg tonight, up to you.
Do you want to still do it? We can wait. All right, we'll wait till, see if Brian wants to take that spot, so the Kathy. So we'll continue to the next meeting.
All right.
Uh, next item is the project material submission deadline policy.
I did not have a chance to write that up for you, that could be tabled to next meeting.
All right, continue that. So, we're gonna wait on the draft decisions and do everything else first. Is that okay?
Uh, you know, the, if it's okay with all of you, I'd like to go through the draft decisions, and then, um, I'm gonna have to get back to doing other stuff. I'll watch the video for the hearings in the meetings. Um, but if, if, if we can go on, I can, I think I have a solution that'll make everybody happy.
All right. So first draft decision is a site plan, special permit, stormwater permit application, uh, addition to existing building, 19 Thompson Road, accessory ID 77-a-13, 77a-22-2, Place Motors, Inc., applicant owner. Site is located in both the Business 4, B4, and Lake Watershed, LWP zoning district. So.
Um, we're gonna go old, we're gonna go old school, like this board and zoning board used to do. Um, I don't have a draft decision for you, but in this particular case, what I would recommend is hearing Chuck's final report, and if he is satisfied, uh, then I would recommend that you, um, approve these with the standard condition.
You'll be okay with that?
Yep.
All right. So make a motion to approve the site plan?
We have to do that.
You wanna ask, you first that, you wanna ask Chuck first, uh, his boss?
What was that?
You're gonna need to talk to Chuck before you find that for sure.
Okay.
So, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, they have requested a couple waivers, and... The lighting for the site, there, they added a note to the plan saying there's gonna be no, uh, additional lighting as part of this building addition. Um, so I don't, i-if you're good with that, I think you might want to discuss the, the waiver. The waiver that they are requesting is for, uh, depicting all of the property boundary. So, right now, the, here, I'll see if I can pull it up for you. So, so right now, they essentially have the portions of the boundary where the building addition is, but the overall site is much larger, larger than that. Uh, so they're requesting a waiver for the other property boundaries, you know, that are not necessarily adjacent to the proposed addition.
All right.
Yes, Mr. Ch-Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
M-Mr. Chairman, the, um, that requirement is, uh, is based on the fact that you need to be able to assess the setbacks and other zoning, but because they own all they continue with parcels that make up their entire site, I spoke to town council, and he said that that's, that's not a problem, because it's common ownership.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Anne. So the other, the only other comment that I had is that, uh, they, they need to do soil testing for the stormwater management system, and basically, um, they're, they are asking if they can do that at the time of construction, uh, due to the use of the site, um, and I don't, I don't, with this type of application, I don't see an issue with that. We just need to make sure it gets, uh, folded into the conditions.
Um, we can condition it for, I think that's what the recommendation is.
Yeah.
I think the recommendation is to condition it based on soil testing, right, Chuck?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I can hear you.
Put a condition in, the condition that approval based on soil testing? Is that what you're?
That, that they need to do soil testing prior to, prior to construction.
Okay.
And provide that information to the board.
All right.
So will that change how they build it, or?
It, it may, it may, um.
If that happens, then we can readjust it then?
Yes, yes. And if, if it's a significant adjustment, it may need to come back to the board.
So if it's a minor modification or whatever?
Yes.
Go ahead.
It'll be a condition, and we'll have a waiver.
Yeah, then what was the waiver for the lights?
Waiver for the lights, condition for the soil testing.
Uh, no, there's no waiver for the lights. They are just, they basically stated on the plan that they are not adding any additional lighting as part of this building addition. So, the on, the only waiver they're requesting is one for the boundary. Uh, because they, they are not proposing any lighting, um, there's really no need for a, a lighting plan.
Yeah, that sounds fine with me.
Yeah. Somebody make a motion?
Uh, make a motion to approve the site plan with, uh, the condition of soil testing prior, being submitted prior to construction for 19 Thompson Road.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. So, I guess you're gonna write that out, Anne, and then go from there?
I'm gonna have everything written up over, technically, I have two weeks. I want to get everything done this week, and Dan, you're gonna have to go into the office and sign these.
Okay, just tell me when.
Will do.
Next draft decision is a site plan, gas station, convenience store, and retail, and special permit for signage, 415 to 431 South Main Street, accessory ID 1-h-5-0, and 443 South Main Street, accessory ID 1-h-7-0, Gas Indifah and Rod Tmone owners, 386 Webster Realty Trust applicant.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would recommend at this point to take up the site plan decision tonight, and the special permit for the signage at the next meeting, um, because the information provided by the applicant on the signage is very, very rough, and I think you're gonna want to be very thoughtful about that. So, I would, uh, continue the special permit decision to the next meeting, and then take up the site plan tonight.
So we can do the draft decision for the site plan, is it, all right? Chuck, do you have anything on that?
Yeah, and again.
Go ahead.
Same protocol, you know, let's have Chuck give his report, and, uh, we'll go from there.
Okay.
So the, the remaining item or comment that we have for this application is, is the same as the previous one, where the, they are requesting to do stormwater soil testing prior to construction, uh, due to the use of the site, and so that would be, uh, the same condition as you, you just made.
Okay. That's okay with you?
Is there anything else?
Nope, that was it.
All right. All right, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan approval for, uh, 415 to 431 South Main Street, uh, conditioned upon the soil testing submitted prior to construction.
And 443 South Main Street.
And 443, I, 443 South Main.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. So that's the same thing, I'll come in and sign? Anne?
Busy, busy, yep.
Okay. Okay, next one is a draft decision, special permit application, additional height and signed square footage of existing pylon sign, 200 Gore Road, accessory ID 6-d-17-0, Seraetho Signs applicant, Indian Ranch Realty owner. Said site is located in the Business 4, B4, and Lake Watershed, LWP zoning district.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, as you called correctly, if you need some visuals, um, Chuck will be able to navigate you to the, uh, to the, um, exhibit that shows existing versus proposed. Um, the, there were no major, there were no comments really from, um, public safety about, um, you know, anything to do with the pylon sign. This is just the pylon, not the electronic message. Um, I do recall Jason, um, having some concerns about the sign being within the setback, and if that's something you want to address, this would be the time to do it.
Yep.
So what you want, is that like, we can make the condition also, or?
Well, I, I think, you know, so I think, but it was a couple things we were looking at, um, first of all, we have, we're, so we're expanding it taller than what's allowed, um, per the, uh, 650 38.6, um, which, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Anne, that's six feet tall they're limited to? That's what the bylaw would limit to?
All right, that's a, I gotta look that up. For height?
Yeah. Just wanted to make sure I was correct.
Yeah, no, no, that's a good idea.
Right. Length of the portion of the wall.
Okay, fine. All right. They're allowed 12 feet.
12 feet, all right, so it's 12 feet, and we're going to, they're proposing 223, which is...
Yeah, it was 41. That's the middle part.
So that's, uh, 18 and a half. So, they're allowed, what, what did we say, 12, and they were going to 18 and a half? Um, so the other expansion would be the square footage, uh, square footage of the bylaw only allows 40 square feet. And we're, I think the previous sign exceeded that, and also we're within the setback. My opinion is to, I think, I think the sign at the very least needs to conform to the 10 feet from the 10-foot setback, uh, because... Uh, 10 foot, it's 10 feet, 10 feet.
Oh, that's right, 10 feet, yeah.
Um, I think if you look at the mobile gas station, which would be the, the only other recent commercial development along that road, that's at least 10 feet from the road. You know, you do have the lodge with the, you know, with the old lodge restaurant, which, uh, a quarter mile down that road. That might be in the setback, I didn't measure it, but that's significantly older, and I, so I think we at least need to make them conform. Um, the height, you know, mobile is taller, you know, I believe that's taller than 12 feet, but there's also three businesses there, as opposed to one. And I think, uh, you know, if...
What's the, consider the restaurant one?
You could, well, you could call that three, I, I suppose, but, um, you know, my, my, uh, opinion is, I think we need to steer a little bit more towards, um, with, with signage, especially with new signage, and I think this is really what this is, it's a brand-new sign. Um, we're not, you know, conversely, say Papageno's, where we're looking at, say, replacing signage, um, on an existing building, um, to have a little bit more conformity. So, my, my opinion would be, wow, the increased square footage, I think 40 square feet is too small, but as far as height and the setback, I think they, there needs to be a limitation.
Yeah.
That's my opinion.
I agree with the setback, yeah.
Yeah.
I would agree with that.
Okay. So, height limitation and of 12 feet according to the bylaw, and if, if, uh, you know, the public does not like the bylaw, they always have the right to change it. With a two-thirds vote, things change.
Yep.
So. At town meeting. Um, so, but who are we to over, right now, the law is, uh, 12 feet, so.
And if they're gonna have to move it back a little bit, they move it forward a little bit, yeah.
That's what the bylaw says, it's 12 feet, and it's, you know, and I didn't hear a reason at the public hearing of why we needed a bigger sign. I think the response from, uh, the representative is, was essentially, we want it, so, without more, it's kind of like, you know, how do you, um, approve something based on the fact that they want it, so.
And it's pretty well open through there, too.
Yep.
Not like there's a lot of trees in your way, and you can see it pretty well.
Right. So, um, I would motion to approve the site plan application, or, yeah.
It's a special, special permit.
I mean, I'm sorry, the, the special permit application for 200, uh, for the signage at 200 Gore Road, uh, limiting the sign to, um, requirements of 650 38.6, which limits the sign to 12 feet in height, and also requires the sign, the edge of the, the exterior of the sign to be a minimum of 10 feet from the, uh, edge of the, uh, from the road, or the edge of the property line.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next is draft decision, special permit application, signage, Papageno's and D'Angelo Restaurant, 126 East Main Street, Viewpoint Sign and Awning applicant, OSJ of Webster LLC owner, site is located in the Business 4, B4 zoning district.
Um, if, if Chuck would be so kind as to navigate you to Exhibit 1, called the Application Plan Set, I can show you the two things you have to decide tonight.
Which, which she, Anne?
Keep scrolling down until, uh, until I say stop. There it is, stop! Okay. Oh, back up, back up.
Up, the next one up? Okay.
Yep, next one up, please.
All right.
All right. So what you see are, the two decisions you have to make on this special permit involve, um, the amount of square footage on the front edge, the top showing the long side of the building. Those two proposed signs are actually in square footage smaller than what is currently existing on the three awnings. So, but they, it still does exceed the allowable amount, so you'll have to decide if you want to allow those two new signs, which exceed the allowable amount, but it is a reduction of advertising on that facade. The second decision you have to make is on the, the door side, and you'll see the bottom shows existing conditions, which that is allowed by right, um, is pre-existing non-conforming. And the sign on the building, same thing, so the only thing you are deciding tonight on that is whether or not you're gonna allow a second D'Angelo sign, which exceeds the allow, the, the minimum allow, I mean, the maximum allowable signage for that entrance. So I would take it in two pieces, just the, the main facade and then the entrance.
So we're comparing, I think the first thing we're doing is we're comparing the canopy signing to the two, uh, individual signs, uh, up top, is that correct, Anne?
Yes, that's, that's the first part of your decision.
All right. Well, I think that it can, it makes it more conforming, and I think if we drive more towards conformity as to non-conformity in larger signs, um, I think it's a, an improvement to at least what the bylaw says.
I agree.
Plus it is two businesses.
Yeah. That's a pretty good sized wall there.
Yep. Which is similar to, I mean, you have Big Lots, you have other Arbishon and Planet Fitness, which...
Oh, yeah.
Are in that area, and they have signs, I would say, that are proportional to their size, in my opinion, I think this is proportional to the size of the business.
Like job lots.
Job lots, too, you know, right.
We also, we all kind of, also kind of set the precedent at the town fair. When town fair change their size of their sign, um, I think it's, it's fair to allow it.
The other thing is, it's, I think we have less illumination, too, with these two signs compared to...
Sure.
Those other canopies, so you'd have less light pollution, not that, that makes that big of a difference in that area, but...
I think it looks better, I think it's an improvement to that building.
Yeah.
All right, um, so I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the two 69.7 square foot, uh, primary signs for, uh, 126 East Main Street.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Um, so, Anne, on the 20.6 square feet, so, the issue is, is there, that they're just displaying two distinct businesses, it's not, the square footage isn't changing?
You're, you're allowed 24 square feet total of that entrance, which what is there now exceeds it.
Yep.
Um, but it's pre-existing non-conforming, so adding that additional sign, which right now shows the D'Angelo sign, um, that is, um, gonna expand the non-conformity, um, and violation of the bylaw?
Um, what, just, so I, I'm just, I'm seeing 20.6 for that doorway sign, and I'm, I'm the existing, and I'm seeing the same square footage on the proposed, that, that's what I'm getting at.
So are they gonna leave?
Yeah, I, I see what you're saying.
Are they gonna leave that red one, the, by the door, that was existing, and add another one on the top?
Yes.
Okay.
The one by the door is pre-existing, it gets to stay and be replaced. The Papageno's sign gets to stay and be replaced, it's the D'Ang, the new D'Angelo sign on the awning, that is the, uh, the question here.
Oh, okay, so it's...
Would it make any better if that bottom sign wasn't there, or it doesn't really matter?
You can't touch that, that's, that's protected.
All right, I'm clear now what we're looking at. If we reduce, that we would reduce it to 40 square feet then, right?
Is that each one?
I'm sorry, I could hear you.
Each one?
If we, if we reduced it to what the bylaw is, it would be 40 square feet, correct? That's what be, would be allowed?
Uh, they're only allowed 24 square feet. What's there now, uh, went up without a permit, and, um, is currently in violation of the bylaw as it is written.
All right, so it's 40.5 square feet, and they're going to 69.
The sign is the same size as the longer.
Yeah, I, I think, well, if, if you add them together, now we're up to 61.1 with the, take the sign, the 40.5 and the, and the canopy sign. Or no, actually, no, you're up way above that, because it's 120 square feet with the canopy.
The canopy was big.
So, it's a 20 square foot increase for, um... And then the illuminated sign, but with the canopy, if that's, we, since we consider that signage, it's, it's a reduction of 100 square feet.
Yeah. But there was nothing on the canopy side by the door entrance, right? There's a canopy, but no words.
Yeah, well, the canopy is considered sign.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. The canopy, the canopy is... Yeah, the canopy is considered branding as well, and the fact that it's coming down decreases the non-conformity, but it's still a question of how much signage do you think is appropriate, given, uh, you know, given what they're asking for.
Well, the height and width is the same as dental implants, which is right next door. And we are decreasing the non-conformity.
Guess we make those a little smaller, or not?
I don't know if it'll look funny if we say, you have to go to 40 square feet.
Yeah.
But then again, they also have a secondary sign that's grandfather, that's 20.6.
Well, they did add something in the bottom, but the other one just said Papageno's, that one says Papageno's with...
D'Angelo's, yeah, that, that's...
No, no, I thought white line, there's wording there, too. How much that adds? What do you think, Kathy?
I feel like they're, I feel like they're reducing it because they're taking down the canopy, and it's...
I think a reduction, so this is a good step in the right direction?
I think so.
Okay, so we, the consensus is to approve just because of the reduction? Okay. Uh, I'll make a mo, make a motion to approve the, uh, the southwest, uh, signage that to 69.7 square feet for 126 East Main Street.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hey, motion passes.
All right, thank you all, I, I'm gonna have to sign off. I will watch the video tomorrow to find out how, uh, how this episode of the planning board ends.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Anne.
Thank you.
All right, uh, so we did the, the sign. So with the public hearing?
Yep, public hearings.
Special permit app... Special permit application, electronic sign message, Serrato signs applicant, and Indian Ranch Realty owner. Said site is located in the business four B four and Lake Watership Protection, LWP Zoning District. Anybody here for that?
Good evening, my name is Sean McGlore with Serrato Signs. Before I review the EMC, I just had a couple of questions on the...
Put the mic a little closer.
I just had a couple of questions on the decision, on the sign that you guys decided on. So 12 feet high is the limit, and 10 feet setback?
Yep.
And then the square footage was fine?
Square footage is fine, yes.
Okay.
That's what I intended when I made the motion.
All right, all right, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
That I had to know.
No problem.
I can review the details on the EMC and whatnot. Because the height is being decreased, I might need to ask to continue, because that's going to drastically change the space below the sign. So I want to just have accurate drawings in order to show it to you. So we can, we can discuss the EMC and then I can continue it.
If this is going to change the design, we probably want to discuss this all at once, right, rather than...
Yeah.
So, I mean, if you could ask for a continuance.
Right.
And then, yeah, we would just take a motion to continue it to September 30th?
I had one other question. The measurement from the street, where is that measurement coming from? The curb, the white line?
I believe setbacks are usually, it's, I don't know what the bylaw says.
Mr. Chairman, I want to say that it says edge of road.
Edge of road.
Edge of road.
It's asphalt land.
Edge of road.
It's a tricky one.
And then the 12-foot height, is that because that sign, this depiction of the drawing was, is 221, I'm almost certain is on the taller side of the sign, because it's on a very steep...
No, it's on a slope.
Yeah, it's on a very steep slope. So 12-foot high, is that...
That would be a question for the building inspector.
Right.
How we interpret it, so the way that issue would work is, because since we, since we made our decision, we can't go back and add, I can't amend the decision.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
At this point. So that's a question for, if it doesn't specify it, that's a question for the building inspector.
He may average it out, we can't...
I don't know if he would say high or low, but I would recommend that he get his decision in writing.
Yeah. So, yeah, I think with the changes in the height and whatnot and setback, I want to show a proper depiction of what the sign is.
We'll continue until next month, if that's okay?
All right.
All right.
I'll make a motion to, or, please, if anybody wants to say anything publicly.
Oh, yeah, is there anybody else here, here on this?
Okay.
All right. You guys all set? All right.
I'm Andy Serrato, I'm the original on the Serrato signs when I did this sign. And I know you made a decision already on the other one, and I guess the question I have is as well. Once he moves the sign back, he's kind of, his hands are tied now, because that slope so drastically, to limit him to 12 feet overall height, he's gonna put him probably even with, the top of the sign could probably be even with the road or just a little bit above the road height. So the other comment I want to make is, when I did do this sign, it was properly permitted. When I met with the owner, there was questions about if LED signs could be allowed. I went to the building department, I pulled a permit, and the permit was issued, is when I paid for the LED sign, and the sign was put up after the permit was issued, because I know there was some question about that as well. So I just wanted to clarify that.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Which I believe everything that Anne you were just saying, I submitted that as evidence in the, in the application to the planning board with the, the original application, and then some other business pieces for information as well.
Okay.
But, yeah, so as far as the, to give you a proper depiction of the design, I'd like to continue.
Okay. So we're gonna continue it to September 30th?
Yep.
Want me to make a motion? All right, I'll make a motion to continue the special permit application for the electronic messaging sign at 200 Gore Road or Indian Ranch to September 30th at 6:30 PM.
All right.
I'll second.
Hold, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, next item is a public meeting, site plan application, 5 Lynnwood Street, accessory ID 13-J-18-0, two duplexes on one lot, All-Star Homes applicant owner. Site is located on a multiple-family residential, MFR zoning district, continues from 7:28.
Oh, no, 4B.
Okay.
Good evening, Chris McClure, McClure Engineering. I'm here on behalf of All-Star Homes. As the chair stated, it's for a, two duplexes on a lot, we're on 5 Lynnwood Street. Obviously, I've been working with the town consultant, CG, and he's provided a letter that says, that we've attached, basically addressed all the engineering comments that we've received to date. There was just one waiver that we were requesting, that was the lighting, not item 15, and we're just gonna have standard wall packs for that, for those two homes, standard lighting at your house, or up to the driveway into the garages.
Chuck, what do you have?
No, the only, the only outstanding, you know, comment to kind of discuss is the lighting, which Mr. McClure just mentioned. So, you know, I think they are requesting a waiver for a lighting plan, so I, you know, the board should weigh in on that.
So what's it, too much light for the village, or what's the waiver for?
Well, the plan, basically, we're just gonna have wall packs in the front of the driveway, you know, facing down for the garage, and then just standard lighting on the, on the entrances, so we, we didn't go and get a, you know, lighting engineer to design, you know, the, you know, typical large-scale plan we'd see, just because it's a, it's a housing, you know, it's a, basically a housing project.
So.
Is there anything, Chuck, you have anything on this?
No, there is nothing else, other than the fact that these are actually the outdated plans that are on the website for some reason. And I also know that the applicant is in the process of doing an application with conservation. Where you see the silt fence in the rear of the property, there is a wetland running along in through here.
So there isn't any waivers we need to consider, there's no outstanding issues that we need to discuss, or...
Well, if you, the lighting waiver.
Okay. Lighting waiver, just for refreshment, lighting waiver would be for...
So this is, this is for site plan approval?
Yeah, I, I understand that. But what do we, so we have two single-family homes, so where would the lighting be required if we weren't to waive it?
The front doors?
Front to front door, he needs to put up spotlights on, on the property then?
I'm, I'm sorry.
I said, you said he's asking for a lighting waiver as part of site plan review, right?
Yes.
So where, if we didn't approve that waiver, would lighting be required? Or does he just need to submit a plan showing lights, village?
So, so Ms. McClure submitted a plan showing the location where they are proposing the lights. Basically, if I remember correctly, it was at the, oh, it actually, this actually does show them. So you have a proposed light fixture at the entrances on each side of each duplex, and then, Chris, I forget, was there also going to be a light over the garage?
Yes, over the garages as well, yes.
So, I don't...
So these are normal, ordinary residential lights, is what I'm, what I'm hearing, okay. I think I'm okay with waiving a normal residential light, if anybody else should be allowed to put on. So, okay. All right. So is there any reason why we need to continue this, or are we good to close it?
So I don't, I, you may want to keep it open in case there are comments from conservation which change the plan. Because then that would allow you to accept new revised plans.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know if Chris has any comment on that?
No, I mean, at that point in time, it's just what we've heard tonight, it's just the draft decisions, once, once the conservation, or is it being still held open?
Yeah, so if we closed it tonight, then if you had to change your plans, you would have to come back to us, and we would have to decide whether or not the change is a minor modification. If it's a minor modification, then it's allowed. If it's not a minor modification, you start the whole site plan review process over again. So haste might make waste. I'm not a builder, so I can't say what I would do.
Right, right.
But it might be a good idea to wait till the 30th, or at least get an indication on what way conservation's going.
Could I just consult with the...
Pardon?
Could I just consult my client?
Oh, yeah, we'll do what you want. I'll do what you want, if... If Anne, if he doesn't have any changes, then he could...
I was supposed to read the public meeting.
Oh, yeah.
On 3A, on 3A, we continue it.
Yeah. She has a real official...
But we do close it.
We continue it.
I'll...
She might be able to do it the next time.
I'll email Anne and ask her what we need to do.
Probably, probably isn't, but we'll be, we'll be okay. So for the next time, I'll, I'll have to cue you, right?
We're good with a continuation, please.
Continuation, okay.
Okay.
So we'll continue, or I'll make a motion to continue site plan application for 5 Lynnwood Street to September 30th at 6:30 PM. All right?
Thank you very much.
One second.
Yeah, it does.
Oh.
I'll second.
Hold, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that could do. So this one here, you can read. Yeah, let's read this one, 4B.
Yeah, maybe I have a warrant.
Next one is site plan approval application, 56 Main Street, accessory ID 1-X-11-0, used car sales, service for onsite sales and sales office. Ahmad Rashid, applicant, Nina Judy, owner. Site is located in the business four zoning district.
In accordance with the provisions of the Webster zoning bylaw, section 650-53, the Webster planning board will hold a public meeting, site plan approval application for used car sales lot, service for the onsite car sales, sales office and signage to be located at 56 Main Street, accessory ID 1-X-11-0. Application was submitted by Ahmad Rashid, 72 West Dudley Road, Dudley, Mass, applicant, and Mania Judy, 72 West Dudley Road, Dudley, Mass. Owners. Said site is located in a B four, business B four zoning district.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We appeared before...
Your name and...
Yeah. Donald O'Neill, I'm a lawyer in Webster here this evening on behalf of the applicant, Ahmad Rashid. And also with me is Mark Elbeck, who, from Elbeck Engineering, who has done the, prepared the site plan for this location. And you, you may recall that we came before, and there was some confusion about the ad that was posted for a, basically a repair garage. And in our situation, the client's plan is for a used car sales, and the repair, he does have repair facilities on the location, but they're not to be used by the general public, it's just for basically vehicles that they would take in and, you know, repair, and then put up for sale. We did submit a revised plan and clarified that information in the application, just to be clear that it, you know, that was the intent. And with the new plan that we submitted, we do show 10, basically, display lot spaces that would be at the front of the building on Main Street. And we're also showing two employee parking spaces and two spaces for customers. In the review comments that we had gotten back, there were a couple of things that we wanted to discuss with the board and get some feedback from you, and response to those, and I think that the primarily relate to, there was a comment in the review that talked about ADA accessibility and a provision for space, and, I mean, our thought was, 10 of the space, we actually have four parking spaces in total. The other spaces are not parking spaces, they're display lot spaces. So at least it's our understanding that the ADA compliant requirement would not apply to a lot of this size, given the number of parking spaces that are involved. And I don't know whether that comment was prefaced on the idea that, you know, there's 14 spaces, but there are actually only four spaces. And if we were to make an ADA space, that would actually take out the two spaces that we have for the customers, because we would need van access adjacent to it, you know, as shown on the site plan. So we wanted to get a little clarification on that. Another area that was involved was the lighting on the building. We're not proposing any lighting of pole lights or anything of that nature in terms of lighting the parking display area. We would just have small building lights, probably one on the front, one on the side, and nothing more than that. So the question would be, would the board be medable to a waiver on the provision of a lighting plan, you know, with the understanding that that's what we're proposing? It's very minimal. We also did provide, after discussions with the town planner, we did show, she wanted us to show on the plans, the building signage, and we're just proposing a small sign, basically five feet by two feet, so 10 square feet on the building and in front of the building, without, you know, nothing illuminated or electronic in any way associated with that.
Just on the one side?
Yes, yeah. So the lighting, there's so little lighting that I'm, you know, normally if you get a lighting plan, it's, there's not much for a lighting engineer to look at in terms of, you know, the spillage, because it's just very, very minimal lighting, as I say. The other issue pertain to, I think, the opening of the existing curb cut, which is on the side of the property on Chase Ave, is currently, there's about 55 feet of curb opening at that location. It actually... It actually, um, is helpful to us in terms of, uh, allowing for, uh, you know, better access to, um, the parking that we do have available. And so there was some comment in the, um, from the review engineer that suggesting that that should be reduced to 24 feet total. We do have some ability to, uh, reduce it somewhat, uh, but we're thinking that the, um, you know, 24 feet would, would be, uh, not necessarily ideal for us in terms of something perhaps less than the 55, but more than, uh, 24 feet.
What are you proposing? How many? 55?
Yeah, we were just keeping it the way that it is. It's, it's in existing conditions without any change. And I think the other area, and, um, Mark can, um, handle some of the, some of the engineering issues that are involved. But in terms of the, um, request for the, um, stormwater management provisions, the question that we had for the board was that, and this is, again, is it's a small lot. It's, I think, 7,300 square feet, give or take. So there is limited, um, space available on the site. About at least 50% of it is, um, currently paved. And, uh, our question, I guess, for the board was, would the board consider, um, allowing, capture of the roof water runoff and maybe, uh, connected into the storm system? That would basically, um, offset, uh, the additional paving that would occur with this, um, proposal, so that basically one would cancel out the other, uh, without necessarily, um, you know, getting involved with, um, onsite infiltration. And I don't know if, if, if you want to add to that, anything to that or, um, or that is...
Yeah, no, I think that covers that, Don. We were just, um, looking at different options instead of running a full stormwater analysis, just because the site is so small.
Is the mic a little closer?
Just because the site is so small and because it is half paved, we're only proposing an additional, um, roughly 3,500 square feet of impervious area.
Well, it depends on the regulations. So Chuck, what do you have on? What do you got to say?
So you, you would have to look at, uh, the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook. And, you know, if you wanted to try and support, uh, a redevelopment site, in their eyes, you know, you could, you could follow those standards. You know, but it's a, it's a commercial site with, you know, almost all the site being impervious. So, um, you'd have, you'd need to follow those regulations.
So you're probably gonna have to do some type of a...
Possibly, most likely. You know, depending on what you had for soils and that sort of thing.
How about the curb cut with that?
So the curb cut, uh, 24 foot is the maximum. If you need it wider than that, you have to put in a divider such that, uh, the, you know, the, the maximum opening would be 24 feet. But you could, you could have, you know, like a, a one-way entrance, one-way exit, you know, each being roughly like 12, 12, uh, feet wide.
Right. Yeah. How about the lighting? Do we need, uh...
It's a, it's a commercial business in, in, right on Main Street. You know, typically that's something that, uh, you would get a lighting plan for. Based on these plans, we don't know what type of lights they are or anything like that, so...
How many candles there are and whatever.
Correct.
My thoughts are if you have, um, your hours of operation, you're gonna be at some point until 4:00, 4:30. It starts to get dark. If you have people driving home, they wanna look at your cars and there's no lights, that could be a safety hazard.
Like floodlights or something?
Yeah, I mean, you just gotta have some sort of light and driving home.
Our employees are gonna need some lights in the back too to get into the cars, right? In the back of the building where the employees park?
Yes.
You have lights there?
Uh, yes, just, uh...
The back and the front?
Yeah, just like, uh, you know, when you walk in, that's, you know, lights up, like a sense of light.
So we just need these on the plan?
Yeah, just some...
The signage and lighting, we need that on the plans too?
Yes.
Like the model of the light or something like that? Is that what you guys usually do?
Typically, yes. Typically you have, you know, the model of the light, the, the height of the light. If these are all building mounted, you know, you just need the height. You don't need a, a pole, uh, detail or anything like that. And then you'd need the, um, you know, the foot candle drawing.
Yep. Especially in the wintertime, you know, it could be closing before 4:00. Or what are your hours of operation?
Five, sixes. I mean, it depends on, on the lights. It gets dark, people always want to come in and look at the car.
Yeah.
Summer we're open, you know, till it gets dark. And in the winter, we just close early, you know, we work on our cars and leave.
And then the ADA?
So I actually, I actually spoke with the zoning official about that today. And, uh, yeah, if you, even if you only have two parking spaces, one of them has to be handicap. So you have to, you have to show, you have to have a handicap spot, the loading zone, and then show the accessible, uh, path to the, the building.
So is any client has to have a ramp and all that?
Right, if the, the entrance to the building is not a grade, right? And that's all straight, uh, AAB, ADA requirements.
All right. That help you?
So, uh, well, that, um, it's, it seems, I, I guess it's surprising that if you have two spaces, one of them has to be ADA compliant.
You don't make the rules.
Which means that nobody else can use the space. There is, uh, you know, there is on-street parking which is available. Doesn't seem to be utilized much on Main Street, uh, which would be, uh, you know, a backup, I guess, for...
That could be for the other customers and...
Yeah, sure. Another, um, thing that I forgot to mention was the, uh, suggestion or request for, um, some sort of traffic study.
Traffic what?
Traffic study to how many projected users. Again, it's, it's 10 used cars and, you know, with a couple of parking spaces. Is that the type of thing that the board would be open to waiving?
Let's see, Chuck?
So that, that requirement is, uh, the, the traffic requirement is you have to, you have to put what the peak, vehicle trips per day is based on ITE. You just have to put that on the plan. And then if the board deems the use significant enough, they can ask you to do a traffic report. Uh, I don't, I don't see any need for that based on this type of use, although that does come from the board.
Now, how about landscaping? Is there, looks like they showed some there, but what's the requirement for that? There's only supposed to be so many feet you need?
So, yes, um, and so that was one of my other comments was, you know, this, basically what you see here, this is their landscape plan. You know, the, the regulations call for, you have to call out the type of plants, the, the size, you know, all that, all that sort of thing.
Yeah, one of the things in, in terms of the, this is the common, I guess, situation that, um, this is a display lot. So, um, in terms of landscaping, um, the idea is not to hide the cars, I, I guess.
Yeah, you don't have to put tall trees there, right? That's not required, I don't think, is it?
Right, so...
Or you could put them in certain spots where it won't appear with the height.
Yeah, and would be, would tend to focus on lower.
I, I think because there has been at least one public comment and I know, I, I can appreciate how a, a butter might view a used car lot. I think, um, if I lived next door, I think I would appreciate if, you know, knowing what is gonna be planted. And I think also with some of, you know, with our history, we've required landscaping plans on site development smaller than this. Thinking about the marijuana facility that was converted, um, at Hazard Marine, basically where that was just part of a, uh, already a commercial establishment. They had to do a landscaping plan. So I think that's, that's, that's an appropriate requirement here.
Yeah, maybe bigger trees along the back.
I'm not saying the type, but I think a plan. You know, I'm, I'm not saying what type of trees or bushes, but I think it's something that's warranted.
Okay. Well, we can look at that and, and see if we can come up with something that, uh, satisfies, um, you know, your concerns.
Good.
And, um, in terms of the traffic, um, you know, plan notation with a note, note on that, that's certainly something we can do as well. But, um, we're hoping that, um, you know, that, that, I can't imagine that there would be a need for traffic study given that.
Yeah, Chuck knows those pretty good, so...
I think what we've required traffic studies, I think, where there's gonna be 18-wheeler access. And that's, or for like a gas station, those always are required. I don't see this being as high volume as one of those facilities. Well, I hope you're lucky. I hope, I hope you're, you're lucky. You're just as busy as a gas station.
Yeah, 100 cars coming through a day. Well, it depends what you sell, right?
Yeah, if you get a nuisance complaint that you're creating too much traffic, then that's, that's probably something you wanna see. We can address that later on.
Anything else, Chuck, or...
Uh, no, I think, I think that's it. And, and I think, you know, really, a lot of the things that we've spoken about here tonight are more about, you know, just showing what you're proposing on the plan. You know, like with the trees and landscaping and things like that. You know, you can, you can do what you want within the regulations, you just need to show it on the plan. That's, that's all. You know what I mean? Would there be, uh, would there be any, uh, thought about leaving the curb cut wide because it is existing? Or do you think we should, we really should try and meet the 24 or divider? The only reason I ask is because the site is so small. To formalize the entrance and, uh, travel aisle, um, you know, might really kind of take over the whole eastern half of the site. Well, you know, either's answer is fine. I just wanted to get clarification, so I'm not kind of guessing at it. So from a planning and engineering standpoint, you know, if this were one of the other applications, like for instance, what Jason was talking about with the, uh, the marijuana sales, that was an existing building, an existing business, they really weren't changing anything. This is, this is a whole new, completely new site, so to speak. Um, you know, there's, there's no building on it right now. You know, that, that requirement is there to reduce accidents, increase safety, so that, you know, there's, there's a, a clear traffic flow into and out of the site. So that, that would be my take from an engineering standpoint.
I think the curb cut's kind of conformed to the requirement. I think it's...
Is there a sidewalk around there or is it gonna be a sidewalk? Does it have to be a sidewalk?
It will have to be ADA accessible.
The sidewalk around it?
Right, so if you, you'll have kind of like a combined driveway, apron, sidewalk, uh, type of situation. Yeah, I mean, it is such a tight site, we may have to look at, you know, we, we may have to look at possibly no onsite parking if...
Is there street lights along on that side too or...
On Main Street, there is street lights.
Oh, so you have some lights that you're gonna get from the town?
And, and there is on-street parking, so I didn't know what the board would, or if the board would be amenable to...
On Main Street or on Chase, uh...
So that...
The parking?
There's, there's parking on Main Street with lighting. And right now, we only have two customer spaces. So by, you know, once we close that curb cut and look at, uh, an ADA parking space, would effectively have no parking anyways? So they're...
For customers.
For customers.
Well, you could make the space a little more over the landscaping spot there. That's, you probably have some room there.
Yeah, I might be able to get it to fit. I just didn't know if the board would be willing to...
And when there's nobody parking in the AD space, where's where people can use it? I don't know, I don't think they can, right?
No.
Yeah, you have to have a sign.
Because then with the van loading, that takes up the second spot. Because you need the, you need the, you need the space and then you need the loading space next to it. So the, the other maybe alternative, and I just, I don't know what will fit and what won't fit once I make these changes. But the other alternative might be to go to no parking and rely on the, um, Main Street on-street parking.
Chuck, is there a requirement for this kind of business with a number of parking spots that it needs to have?
Yes, that was, that was one of the comments, that there needs to be a parking table showing, you know, the calculation of the required number of spaces. And the, the off-street parking is really something you should get input from Ann on.
All right.
Well, I think we've got some direction anyway.
So, so we're playing with all those changes and then we'll review what we got and where we're at, right?
Yeah, and, and, you know, we're, we're sort of, um, I mean, this is...
Still planning, right?
I, I think it's a good location for what we're proposing, but it is, um, you know, there are limitations with the site, uh, in terms of what we can do, um, that, um, make it, uh, challenging. But at the same time, I think overall it would be a lot nicer with something new in that location rather than what's there now, which is, uh, yeah, not the best. So, um, we can, um, see what we can come up with and I guess come back to you and, uh, hope that you appreciate, um, you know, that our, our options are pretty limited.
Yep.
That location with, um, but while still maintaining, you know, a viable use that allows for the productive use of the property, but, um, you know, with some consideration for what the limitations are. So, um, so we'll be, uh, we'll be back. Your next meeting?
Good.
All right. Make a motion to continue the site plan application for 56 Main Street to September 30th at 6:30 PM.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
All right.
Uh, we got discussion items. Sixty-four Worcester Road, United Medical Waste Transportation.
So I haven't I haven't heard anything new on sixty-four Worcester Road. Uh, they they basically need to put together a revised ASBIL plan. Uh, they did, they did add their handicap parking space and uh a few, a few other things. Those things need to be added to the ASBIL plan, and when that gets submitted, we'll we'll take a look at it. Um, so that was kind of on hold until until we get that.
Does the stormwater permit fifty-six Worcester Road?
So on on fifty-six Worcester, uh, the attorney for the applicant let Ann know that they completed the work on the drainage swale. If you remember, uh, their plan called for a drainage swale, but they constructed the drainage swale within the town right away, not on their property. So they, uh, the attorney said that they they reconstructed it, and uh their engineer just needs to do the ASBIL plan and submit that to the town.
About Camille Road with that, turns with that cul-de-sac at uh Com- Com- Camille Road?
On Camille?
Camille.
No, nothing, nothing new that I know of on Camille.
Oh, that's the one on the Connecticut border?
No, that's not the Connecticut border. Yep, that's not on here. I'll get in trouble. I'll get in trouble if I start talking about the Connecticut border, because that's not a, on here.
Okay. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it was supposed to connect.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, yeah.
They, so they didn't do the cul-de-sac yet, or or?
I have not, I have not heard anything.
Supposedly they bought some of the land so they could do a turn and.
Supposedly, but I don't know.
Till we see it, right?
What's happening with it, yeah.
All right. Uh, what's the other? Site plan, one-thirty East Main Street, gas station, convenience store, drive-through signs.
Uh, let's see. So we have a a very minor change. They wanted to relocate one of the drainage manholes, and and Ann and I talked to them about that. I reviewed it. Um, that seemed very de minimis, so that was uh, that was fine. And the other the other thing that they just asked about is they want to relocate their handicap parking space. Uh, if you're standing in front of the building, looking at it, they wanna put it on the left-hand side instead of right in the middle where the entry to the building is. And again, I talked with the uh the zoning official about that today, and it's, I think it's just gonna require some further discussion. I need to talk to Ann about that. Um they they gave a a couple of different reasons as to why they want to relocate it. Um it may, it may be something that comes to the board and and it becomes a board decision. Um.
What's the regulation? They have to be so far from the door?
So the the AAB uh regulation is that you you should have it as close to the building entrance as possible.
Okay.
Which they currently have. So they're now moving it further away. Uh, and one of the, one of the reasons that they're giving is that uh they feel that having the handicap space directly in front of the building is gonna cause a tripping hazard because the handicap parking space in the loading zone are at the same elevation as the sidewalk in front of the building. And so the sidewalk in front of the building has a six-inch uh reveal, so it's like a six-inch curb, and the handicap space and the loading zone are at that elevation, and then as you move away from the handicap space, it slopes down, uh, so then you get the six-inch reveal of the curb. And they feel that having that kind of ramp up to the sidewalk is going to cause tripping hazards for them. Personally, I thought it was a a good layout in that you had your loading zone so that people from the gas pumps could walk directly into the entrance using that loading zone, whereas what they would like to do, now you're gonna have cars stacked right up in front of the building entrance.
Yeah.
You know, if that's what they want, I guess, that's not necessarily for me to decide, other than the fact that, you know, AAB says you should have your handicap as close to the entrance to the building as you can.
And you need a curb cut to go up and all that too, right?
Right, so they they want.
Wheelchairs.
Right, so what they want is they want to have that six-inch curb reveal right at the entrance to the building.
Okay, oh, I see.
Because they feel with the the ramp transition, there's more tripping hazard with that than if you have a six-inch reveal. That's just what the owner of the store wants to do.
That's the Jimmy's one?
Nope, this is uh, this is one-thirty-eight, so it's Yatco, it's across from.
Oh, okay, the new one. Oh, okay, oh.
So.
All right.
So I don't know, if you guys have any input on that?
I think it sounds like a minor modification.
Yeah.
You know, I, to me, you know, it's, all right.
I'd almost have to see it too.
You gotta see it, it's, oh, as close as possible. I mean, I hear ambiguous language, but.
Yeah, that's the thing.
Also, I don't know if, you know, their their reasoning as well.
Yeah.
Have to make more work for us, but.
But if it's safe or ready to log in, then it should be okay, right?
Yeah.
Overall. All right. Anything else?
Chuck, Chuck showing us the.
Uh, let's see.
Oh, yeah, that's the, okay.
So you can see, this is, this is the current, currently approved design.
Okay.
So you can see, here's your handicap parking space here, here's your loading zone, and with this grading contour four-eighty that comes out, this is this whole area here is higher than the rest of the parking spaces.
Is that where they're gonna be all across the front there?
Yes, yes. Oh, this resets each time you do it. Sorry. Okay, so this.
Oh, yeah, there's a.
This this here shows the the parking in front of the building.
So the handicap's going where?
So the handicap.
See, it's there.
Is.
Right there, okay.
Is right here. This is what is approved. They wanna move the handicap over here, that your handicap space would be here, and then the loading zone would be here. Uh, having this area raised and essentially flush with the front sidewalk, and then this area in through here would have a six-inch step down into the parking lot.
Oh, I like that.
If it's flush with that, with the loading zone, then if somebody was in a wheelchair, they could easily transition onto that.
Yeah.
That graded area.
Correct. That's how it's, that's how it's designed. So they would, they would basically take that grading and move it to the left side of the building over here, right?
So it's all flat, yeah.
So this area would be flat and flush with the sidewalk, and then this area in through here would have a six-inch step.
I would see.
That's okay, yeah.
I would say if you're moving it like all the way to the right, that's very far away from the, but you're you're moving over.
Yeah, you're moving it over for air force bases.
Yeah, I don't, that's, that's huge.
Where was the parking before? Was the approved parking?
This is the approved parking area that you see.
Oh, and they're just moving them.
They they want to move this handicap parking and loading zone here or over to here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think if the regulation says as close as possible, that is as close as possible, so if you're moving it away, I don't think you're really keeping with what the spirit of the regulation says.
Right.
All right.
Oh, we'll see what they do.
Yeah.
Okay, but in general, you guys see this as like a minor modification, so.
Oh, I don't think it's required a site plan review. If they wanna pursue it, then we can make a decision whether it's a minor modification. Obviously, they haven't. I mean, you've heard some of our input, so you can advise about what we may or may not do.
Yeah, me with somebody's handicap, my wife, she always wants it as flat as can be. That's any curve to have to help her up with it. All right, uh, make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second.
Hold those in favor?
Aye.
All right.